We're quicker up.
We're quicker up.
There you go.
We missed the quick one.
Where's Darren?
Hi, Doc.
Is Darren here?
Yeah. He's gone.
No?
Yeah.
Good, I don't think that is. Just a little off the stage.
Morning.
Hey, how we all doing?
We're all good.
I'd like to convene the Board of Supervisors, please, for our April 19, 2011 board meeting. I'd like to call this to order. Would we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Whoops. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Long live the republic.
I have the following announcement. Last week, the Board did meet in a closed session, a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 956.9b1. No action was taken. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without further discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested member of the public may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed for further discussion prior to the Board's taking action. The Chair would like to move the minutes, item one, since we do not have them, and I'll ask for a continuance. Are there any Board members that wish to pull any item on the consent agenda? Any staff member wish to pull any item on the consent agenda? Any members of the public here present this morning that have any item on the consent agenda they have to -- wish to have discussed with or by the Board? Clyde, what's number?
You were talking about a closed session you had. Was there actually litigation filed yet on that? Was there a case number or is this a possible?
I can't. I don't know.
Potential litigation.
I don't know.
So there's not -- there's not nothing filed in court?
I have no idea. I have no idea. We didn't take any action in the closed session. Any items on the consent agenda, items one through five inclusive? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board. The Chair is open for a motion on the balance of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Callaway, a second by Supervisor Tofanelli for the Board discussion. All in favor, so indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? Hearing no negatives. It passes on a 4-0-1-absent vote of the Board of Supervisors. We'll go back to item one, the minutes. How long a continuance do you need?
Yes.
One week? I'll ask the Board for a one-week continuance on the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Callaway, a second by Supervisor Tofanelli for the Board discussion. All in favor, so indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 4-0-1-absent vote of the Board of Supervisors. We'll stand in recess until 9:10. Thank you.
I'm just moving.
Right now, this seems pretty...
I'd like to reconvene the Board of Supervisors, please, and we'll move forward to our 9:10 a.m. regular agenda, public comments. Five minutes per person. Comments shall be limited to the items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board. Are there any public comments this morning? If so, please come forward, give your comments from the podium. We are of record. We would appreciate if you would state your name for the record to help the Board clerk with the minutes.
Good morning. My name's Bonnie Newman. I'm from Double Springs. And usually, I come and have some criticism about one agency or another, but today, I want to talk about something that's turning out to be beneficial, I think, for the community. As you know, I've been advocating for somebody that has traumatic brain injury. Traumatic brain injury falls between the cracks of the Mental Health Department and Adult Services. And up until this point, there's been very little recourse for somebody who has traumatic brain injury, who needs assistance, who may be exhibiting some mental health symptoms, but does not qualify for mental health services. Recently, because I think of the ongoing outreach that I've been doing to get assistance for my client, Mental Health Department and Adult Services are actually working together to help us find a resolution for my client. If you're aware, the Adult Services does placement for board and care. Board and care does not embrace mental health issues. And the Mental Health Department, of course, does not consider somebody with brain injury a candidate for their services. But because nobody is doing anything, these two agencies are actually working together, soliciting a facility for somebody who has a great need for it. And I would just like to thank Rita Downs for hearing the need and rising to the occasion and authorizing somebody in her department to assist somebody in Adult Services to secure a location for somebody who's in great need of permanent placement. So finally, I have something good to say about the agencies I've been complaining about for a couple of years, and hopefully, I won't have to come back and keep complaining, but there may be resolution very soon. I have a new can. I lost my can. It was full of bubble gum and a couple of bucks. So now, I have something that I can't lose. We're still soliciting donations for fingerprints and background checks, and we'll continue to do so as long as they're necessary. Thank you for hearing me out, and I hope I don't have to complain about those folks again, but hopefully, we've got a couple of steps to be taken before resolution is found. Any ideas, any thoughts, any questions? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Peter Reyes. I'm from Valley Springs. I'm from Calaveras. I more like I have a couple of questions for you folks. First of all, I feel bad that some of the teeny poppers got put on the spot last week. It was the kids, because I think it was unfair, and I think they were being used. But maybe you folks can, or some of you can, direct me to the right answers. Did you folks take a look at where those bags were made at? The bag, the shopping bags you got from the kids? China. Okay. Do you folks know what those bags made out of? Oil.
This isn't question and answer. Give us your comments, Peter.
I'm giving you the comment, okay? I'm making a comment, and I'm sure you feel responding to it, okay?
Thank you.
No, it just points out fallacies that somehow, and maybe Mr. Palmer will take credit for it, that the understanding that you all for and agree what was in that statement. And I find it kind of ironic that the statement was enclosing some belief and values that not quite totally accepted. And there's some certain fallacies in there. And it's stated like undeniable truth. Well, there's a lot of deniable truth in it. And I would hope that the kids in the future will take the time, I believe the gentleman Steve Fairchild, morning Kevin, if they take a little trip over there and have those kids educated what's been happening. And the historic professors, I'm sure he will be able to, the climate change, be explained what happened to the Egyptian empire, the heaven on earth by Nile. What caused that to disappear? And I'm sure they can explain the climate change. How did it change the Ice Age in San Joaquin Valley? What had happened? So, I mean, I really appreciate that maybe you don't talk about situations like what we have, and I still haven't heard any comments about how to handle fluorescent bulbs in public places or by you as a public agency. I would love to know how much mercury is going to be in the air when that little fluorescent bulb gets dropped that's sold by General Electric from China, that's the same group that doesn't pay any income tax, exempt from EPA, I'm sure you're very happy about to know that, and minded other federal requirements. But some folks are pushing like fluorescent bulbs. We've got no answers for that. They don't tell the whole truth. And it would be time to some of our greatly educated and great minds that do all the traveling all over the country that maybe take a look at some of those things that are being left out and not mentioned to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward.
Good morning. Dixie Poslin, Valley Springs. Last Sunday, I attended the Valley Springs tax rally, and our American flag was posted all over. The Boy Scouts put the flag up. It was a nice group gathering. Then I went to Angels afterwards. I was going to attend that group meeting until my husband and I drove through the parking lot on equal basis. There's the American flag, United Nations flag. You don't know what that did to me. I was so angry. United Nations flag tees right into what we talked about last week. These poor kids that were brought before this group, they were not given the education on what was on the other hand of this Earth Day. You go on the Internet, that's the best education tool that we have. Put in UN versus Earth Day. You will sit there for hours and hours and hours and hours and read what the UN is doing. If any of you support what went on in Angels, I'm truly, truly, truly disappointed in you as Americans. I will sign my name, even though I don't think it's necessary.
Other public comments? Joe?
Joe Kelly. Big switch of change in what I was going to speak on, but what I have today is I'd like to request a format change, and this is on item 11, and it isn't discussion of the study session. It's a format change because of how this was brought forward. But I would like to see that you, the Board members, speak first so that we can get your input, your ideas, your thoughts about this Ag Resolution Dispute Committee, because you are the ones that brought it back to the Ag Dispute Resolution Committee to bring it back forward here to take a vote on it. And I think that would allow us, we the people, to have a little more information to go on to make our decisions in a very short time, sitting here, to be able to get up and speak on the issue. I would appreciate it if you would do that. And if there's going to be a time limitation on it, then please do it at the start of the agenda item rather than when it comes to public comment. And something else I just noticed here. Under Correspondence, it says the Board may take action on any of the following items. So I'm looking at this as that now you are addressing this that it is an agendized item subject to public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I'm a little more, I really didn't intend to get involved in this discussion, but I was a crab fisherman and shrimp fisherman in Alaska. I never got out to the Bering Sea, but I see that Bering Sea program online, on TV sometimes. I don't like to watch it because I don't see all the romance. I see the destruction that's going on out there. Those people are out there destroying the public domain, the global commons, and they all know it. They all justify it for the same, by the same argument, that if I don't get that fish, somebody else is going to get it, so it might as well be me. I did notice one thing. In channel surfing, I saw an episode of it for a moment, and I saw these people loading Tanner crabs out of the Bering Sea. Well, when I finished fishing up there, Bering Sea was just opening up, and all they were taking were king crabs. So if they're fishing Tanners in the Bering Sea, that means they've already taken the big hit out of the king crabs. They've already logged off the redwood forest and now they're getting into the fir and the pine. So we need something like world government and the United Nations to protect the global domain from people who are destroying it. Thank you.
I can't help this, but the way to address that problem is to quit eating fish and eat more beef. I'm sorry, I couldn't help it.
What business are you in?
Yeah, what business? Is that a conflict of interest?
Thank you.
Marty?
Marty Crane, Valley Springs. First, I'd like to say that Calaveras is so fabulous, and everybody recognizes this. Sometimes we forget, but as recently as this weekend, we had the, excuse me, we had the Calaveras Follies right here in our county to raise money for our youth mentoring program. And we had celebrities. The great-granddaughter of Martelena Dietrich visited our county. Bette Midler, Goldie Hawn, and Diane Keaton came and helped us raise money for our children. So, of course, they're filming on location, and they had to catch a plane, so they're gone now. But anyway, it was very exciting, and so mark your calendars for next year because it was lots of fun. On another subject, I'd like to say Bonnie, thank you for always being a community advocate and for always trying to be part of the solution. Sometimes you have to be that little grain of sand. Who was it that said this? Got to be that little grain of sand in the oyster that irritates the oyster and creates a pearl. So anyway, we're watching for the pearl. Another thing I wanted to mention was, I missed it, I think I was on jet lag from the Follies, but little Jessie McCutcheon turned 100 years old. Big party yesterday, you know, at the senior center. So Jessie's one of the many people that we make decisions for, that we represent in our community, and she's one of many. And she happens to have made it to the 100-year mark, but there are others who are right around there. But they can't get here. It's a little bit too early for them in the morning, and the older you get, the longer it takes to kind of get your motor going in the morning and take your personal inventory. So anyway, I've been noticing lately that we spend an inordinate amount of time talking about definitions of words. And as was mentioned last week extensively, words that used to mean something and that we could then use in our everyday conversations and move forward to make progress have now become, I'll quote, a nefarious word, or I have to look that word up a little better, but anyway, have become like a dirty word. Things like sustainable, community, collective, Earth Day celebrations. These are words that we could use to our benefit if we all could agree on what we want them to mean here in Calaveras. Not what the big money people that have infiltrated our government processes would like us to believe, because if we believe what they have tried to instill in us that these words mean, or what these words have morphed into on the national scene, if we believe that, then everything we do is a knee-jerk reaction, and we don't get the work of the people done. So I would like to, maybe this is a project for our students, and intelligently spoken last week, I have to again say. They were fearless, and I applaud them again. Maybe this is a project for them, you know? We should give them some words and say, create a definition that works for Calaveras, so that when we talk about this, we can stop wasting our time spitting and moaning and fighting with each other about, over the definition of a word. And, you know, there's that statement or quote or something that they were coming after the Jews, but I wasn't Jewish, so I didn't say anything. They were coming after the blacks. I wasn't black, so I didn't say anything. Now they're coming after me. Well, I suspect that Marty Crane will become one of those dirty words one of these days. So I'd like us to fix this so we can get on with the business of the people. Thank you. So if you have a word you want to have defined, please let me know.
I have 21.
I'll put it on the list.
Okay, okay. Keep the comments directed to the Chair. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward. Please come forward, young lady.
Thank you. I feel a little inadequate because she's an eloquent speaker, and I rarely get up here. My name is Sandy Baker. I'm from Real River Flat. I'm Terry Baker's wife, and I rarely get up here because I work. And so I wanted to take the opportunity, since I took the day off, to speak to the Board of Supervisors. The EERC, since it got touched on, I wanted to express to the Board of Supervisors that in working with them, I felt that it was very one-sided. I feel that even though we had Bob Germany and Susie Coe brought into us, especially Susie Coe, was like putting a fox in the hen house. There wasn't anybody representing the public, a non-Ag person, to give comment as to the fairness of how we were being treated, and I feel we were being treated very unfairly. The amount of money, hours, man-hours, resources from Calaveras County wasted on our rooster problem next door was tremendous. I felt that it could have been alleviated in a much more timely manner had both sides been represented fairly. I think these are resources, especially in this time of economic problem, that should not have been wasted, should have been applied, it could have been applied to any one of our community projects, whether it's for children or mentoring or for home health or those kind of things. One of the things that I felt has been a problem is that the Board of Supervisors maybe needs to give a little more recognition that the people that are here in the audience are intelligent human beings. We do come from a wide variety of resources. I feel that there has been a failure in recognizing the tenacity, which obviously, I think my husband has definitely through the years provided, you know, in our subject. And I think the Board of Supervisors, if you had been more consistent in your decisions, a lot of the money and time would not have been wasted. I just want to say thank you. Love Calaveras County. Will die in Calaveras County. We moved up here eight years ago. I've become part of the community. Going to retire in three years. Hopefully, then, you'll see a lot more of us and more of us planting the daffodil bulbs and actually becoming part of the community and helping to mentor and really push this entire county forward. Jim Jones. Hate to see you go. Sorry, but thank you. You've definitely put a wrench in the process, and I'll admit it, I am not sorry to see you go. And I hope that your successor has much more open-mindedness and much more respect for the public's intelligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Sharon Romano. Pardon me. I live in Calaveras County, and I live in San Andreas. After returning from a leisurely vacation, I sat down on Saturday evening to catch up on the local news and the Calaveras enterprise. I read in absolute disbelief the story about the Calaveras High School Earth Club students being bullied and verbally attacked. Instead of praising these students for their initiative and concern for the environment, community, and Mother Earth, excuse me, as well as coming up with a resolution and organizing events to support those values, they were attacked by the likes of Supervisor Tom Tryon, Al Segala, Peter Reyes, and members of the Tree Party. The substance of the arguments against support the students' resolution were based on the belief that the United Nations Agenda 21 is a plan for a new world order and a socialized government. I am willing to wager that most of the challengers have not read the UN Agenda 21 and are relying on the misleading interpretations of the United Nations resolution, specifically the flyer prepared by Freedom Advocates, a civil liberties advocacy group. In order to save trees, I'm providing a disc for each of you that has the official full text of United Nations Agenda 21, the purpose of which in part states the following. Humanity stands at a defining moment in history. We are confronted with a perpetuation of disparities between and within nations, a worsening of poverty, hunger, ill health, and illiteracy, and the continuing deterioration of the ecosystems on which we depend for our well-being. Agenda 21 addresses the pressing problems of today and also aims at preparing the world for the challenges of the next century. I hope you will at least read the official summary that is also on the disc and be prepared to point out where the UN resolution, primarily meant to assist emerging nations, supports that sustainability is an effort by a highly organized, highly financed new world order. To the students of Calaveras High School Earth Club, I commend you and thank you for your concern for the planet and your efforts to bring this issue to the attention of the community. And to those of you who did not support these students, specifically Supervisor Tryon and Tofanelli, Al Segala, Peter Reyes, and members of the Tree Party, shame on all of you.
Any other public comments? If so, please.
My name is Tom Pride.
Okay, Peter. This is for the public to address the Board of Supervisors, not to talk to each other out there. Please, come to the podium if you're going to speak and speak to the Board. Clyde, what is your name?
Clyde. Anyway, I guess we're going to have Communion Week next week?
What?
Communion Week. We're celebrating Pam, which is the god of the forest, so I guess, since I'm a Christian, you should recognize me, and we'll have communion next week here.
Okay.
So we will celebrate, you know, and then maybe we'll have something for the Muslims the week after that and everything else. I think that we should...
Why don't you bring the coffee and donuts, Clyde?
You know, we could probably do that for communion. It'd probably be better than the wine, anyway. Okay, anyway, I just think that we should be neutral on religion, however you want to describe your religion or that. And I see tree huggers as a religion, Mother. In fact, even Mother Earth, I think that we should keep it out of the conversation. I think that people's personal beliefs and stuff like that should be in their church or out in the forest or wherever they go. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we should refer to Earth as Father Earth. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments. I'm going to bring it back to the Board, and we're going to move forward to item eight.
No, seven.
Excuse me. Item seven. A public hearing for consideration of purposes?
It's not 9:45.
We'll stand in recess till 9:45. Thank you.
Really take that title. I'll start next week.
And I see tree huggers as a religion, mother. In fact, even Mother Earth, I think that we should keep it out of the conversation. I think that people's personal beliefs and stuff like that should be in their church or out in the forest or wherever they go. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we should refer to earth as Father Earth. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments. I'm going to bring it back to the board and we're going to move forward to item eight.
No, seven.
Excuse me. Item seven. A public hearing for consideration of purposes.
It's not nine forty-five.
We'll stand in recess till nine forty-five. Thank you.
Really take that title. I'll start next week.
Thank you.
You may start again.
Wait a second, Mary. Would you start over, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mary Sewicki, Director of Calaveras Works Human Services. We've been notified by the State Department of Community Services that they will be accepting applications for the planning and technical assistance grants that are going to be made available for fiscal year 2010, 11. The amount per jurisdiction is $140,000, potential with $70,000 of that being for project-specific planning activities. The other $70,000 would be for what they call nonspecific planning activities. And so we are interested as a community in hearing ideas from the public as to the specifics that they would like to hear the county government apply for these particular funds on behalf of various organizations. We have notified the public via both an ad in the Calaveras Enterprise and the due amount, as well as we've had, actually have had a number of calls. And so there are a number of the public that are willing to speak to you on their ideas today.
Thank you, Mary. I'll bring it back to the board. Is there any board discussion or questions of Mary? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to address the board on this matter? We'll limit the comments to three minutes per person. Please come forward, address the board from the podium.
Good morning. Bonnie Newman. I'm hoping that, and I haven't heard or seen, that there's going to be some addressing of the homeless situation, whether we get a permanent shelter facility or we do a rental in a building. I think it's an issue that needs to be addressed. I know they're ripping down the jail over here, the old jail. God, those are all little rooms that could be used for somebody to sleep in. I know everything's just going to be disconnected, but homeless shelter in a community can be a benefit, it can be a deterrent. And I've been looking at Plyler and Lily's store for a couple of years being empty, imagining what it would be like to have a shelter in that community. I really don't know the answer, but I do know homelessness is a problem in Calaveras County and to address it on a level that would take, adding $140,000 and $70,000, that might be adequate to get a facility, but as far as staffing a facility, it'd be the same problem that the jail's going to have. You've got a nice building, but then how are you going to have people monitoring it? I imagine it would take a lot of volunteerism, a lot of community networking, possibly from churches and other community agencies, but I just think homelessness, homeless shelter should be addressed as long as there's any money possible to assist in that effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward.
Good morning, Chairman Tryon and members of the board, Ms. Boyce and Mr. Jones, county staff. My name is Beetle Barber. I am Housing Resources Director for the Amador Tuolumne Community Action Agency, or ATCA. And I'm here this morning to ask the board to consider our proposal for the $35,000 in planning and technical assistance funds. In April of 2010, ATCA responded to a request for a proposal to work with Calaveras County Behavioral Health Services on the creation of units of housing for homeless adult clients with mental illnesses. ATCA was selected as the most qualified developer in May of 2010. Since award of the bid, I have met with Rita Downs on many occasions, the Behavioral Health Director for Calaveras County, to discuss our possible role as a nonprofit housing developer for the Mental Health Services Act Housing Funds. Her department has prepared a memorandum of understanding to make our partnership formal. As partners on the project, we have been looking at and are still looking at numerous housing options in Calaveras County. Together, we are working with a housing specialist from the Corporation for Supportive Housing, and we've been invited to apply for a $50,000 pre-development loan from that organization. The Mental Health Services Act funding allocated to Calaveras County for development and operation of housing is $629,000. As you know, there is an approaching deadline for using those funds. It is the hope of ATCA and county behavioral health staff to explore the chance to create a much larger housing project that would benefit clients, but also be able to serve the greater community of low-income persons. This is an opportunity to collaborate with numerous agencies in the county to bring much-needed housing that is affordable to entry-level workforce persons and to persons living on fixed incomes. We are requesting to apply for the $35,000 in planning and technical assistance through the Community Development Block Grant Program. The funds will be used for pre-development costs, such as environmental reports, market analysis, feasibility, financial feasibility studies, and identifying and applying for additional capital development funding. We're honored and excited to be partners with Calaveras Behavioral Health on this project. Our housing division at ATCA is fairly small, however, and we know we will need to build our capacity to complete the project by working with experts with experience in housing.
You have thirty seconds.
That we will ultimately need to blend multiple funding streams to meet the requirements. In return for your permission to apply, we offer ATCA's role as a sub-recipient of the funds. ATCA will pay a consultant experienced in the CDBG program to write the application and administer the funds, taking full responsibility for the grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? If so, please come forward.
I would ask that the information for nonprofit status be given to all contractor associations or all licensed contractors in the county of Calaveras so they can see how to create a nonprofit for participation in CDBG funding applications. What I've seen in the past, and maybe not in this county, but in other counties, that it has been primarily going to those with a track record history. People's self-help housing, for example, of that sort, sweat equity housing, or that would get priority over a contractor coming in who had created a nonprofit. And I think if you want to create jobs, create the nonprofit's ability for these associations that they can get, put their people together to do this, or that a single contractor can go out, licensed contractor can go out and create the ability to create jobs, build housing when it comes to the housing factor of CDBG funding. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Rita Downs, Director of Behavioral Health Services for Calaveras County. I just wanted to speak in support of the request from ATCA to get a planning grant for, from CDBG. We have, are working with ATCA to develop five units of housing with the funding that we have from the Mental Health Services Act, which will now go through the Cal HFA, California Housing Financing Associate Agency at the state. Complicated process to do that, and we are hoping that with this additional funding, ATCA would be able to bring in other funds to develop a larger project, which would help other than just the target population that we have for the seriously mentally ill who are homeless. So I think it's a great idea and I hope that they will apply and receive the funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita.
My name is George Chimiklis. I am the new Executive Director of the Resource Connection and new resident of Calaveras County, Copropolis.
All right.
What a move. Anyway, I wanted to come to you today and express my support for the application of the Amador Tuolumne Community Action Agency. For three years before coming to work for the Resource Connection, I worked under contract with the California Institute for Mental Health, which is the training wing of the State Mental Health Directors Association. And I'm very much aware of the difficulty that Calaveras County Mental Health has had in trying to find a qualified housing development partner that meets all of the requirements of the Mental Health Services Act. Was very pleased when ATCA threw their hat in the ring and I believe that they'd be an excellent partner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am.
Good morning. I'm Gillian Murphy. I'm with the Samhainke Delta College Small Business Development Center, actually located in Stockton, but covering four counties, including Calaveras County. We provide business consulting services and training to people either in business or starting a business. We've done so, we've worked a long time with the EDC when it was more active in the county and currently work with Trudy Lackey, a local resident, who provides business consulting on our behalf. That consulting is always without charge. We are proposing a planning grant within the CDBG to look at interviewing businesses within Calaveras County to determine the needs of the businesses, particularly looking at their credit needs, technical assistance needs, and training needs. The goal, of course, to do that would be to look at business creation, job creation, business retention, and business growth. Specifically, what we'd like to be able to do is identify individual businesses with the capacity to grow, businesses needing financing, needing training, and needing consulting. With that information, though, we would then use the resources of the Small Business Development Center and bring consultants to the county and using consultants within the county to provide consulting on our nickel this time, looking at, working with those individual businesses to make sure that they are credit-worthy, have credit capacities, so in fact, they can borrow money, look at those businesses that are seeking to grow and help them to provide a plan and to construct a plan that makes sense. And also working with businesses that are perhaps suffering some challenges right now and that there are ways that we can assist them in growing their marketplace, perhaps reducing the cost, increasing their sales, so in fact that they are retained businesses in Calaveras County, retain jobs, which, which in part is going to help the overall economic footprint of Calaveras County. So again, it's the Small Business Development Center, working in conjunction with local organizations here. We have in the past worked with the county. Out of this could happen, could come, Ms. Boyce, I'm not sure you want to hear this, but could come a new CDBG micro-enterprise fund. One existed many years ago, but it may give an opportunity to look at future CDBG funding and looking at the creation of a micro-enterprise just for Calaveras businesses. Stockton, City of Stockton just did one, and in six months, we worked with the businesses and seven loans were made, which was a kind of out-of-the-park numbers, which shows the real and true need for businesses right now for capital, small amounts of capital, large amounts of capital. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Your name again, please?
It's Gillian Murphy. Thank you.
Any other public comments? If so, please come forward.
Peter Reyes, Valley Springs. I went through the packet and I was looking for it. It did not, it was not going to be any financial burden to the county, which I applaud that, but it did not name the source of the funds. Who's going to be burdened with this financing yet? I would like to have an answer to that. What you're looking for is unless some private party coming forward with the funds to finance another administration, it's going to, taxpayers are going to be paying for it sooner or later somewhere. Now, I really appreciate it, but I would like, I believe there's a couple of other agencies that being paid right now that are looking at the same thing. Wasn't recently, a couple of months back, that you folks agreed to have hire eight consultants at $200,000 apiece to take care of the county's burden, what the plight and the poorness in this county? But you, when you cooperate with the Tuolumne County, there was eight $200,000 consultants you folks were hiring. I believe the general plan consultant is going to answer to these problems that we have in this county. I should would like to know if somebody can identify the bright, low-income areas of this county. Do we have to borrow money to create another bunch of administration to solve the problem eventually? Are this money not one cent going to go to, I believe it's about 60 homeless people in this county? How many millions of dollars of administrations you want to increase and establish to solve the problem? The amount of money we spend on studies, how much of that money going to the actual needed one? I mean, it's nice to be feeling important. It's nice to feel good. But how does this really actually going to help the folks, as some of you mentioned, that live in a plastic tent? How much of that money actually going to help the food bank? I mean, it's nice to be feeling important. But let's get real, folks. You're parting administration on top of administration. You're all going to make feel good, oh, we're going to do something about it. But you're not disclosing how much of that dollar is going to go to the people who need it in this county. You have approximately sixty, was fifty-something before? You know how much of the money you've, you're channeling to consultants and studies of their problem that never gets to those people? I mean, I have a problem with that. I mean, it's, I know they mean well, but do we need another study that we have a problem? You folks live in a county, you know what a problem is. But you want to justify another administrative organization without putting a cent to the people who need it? Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Oh, by the way, here's the submit for that.
Did you give it to the part of the thank you?
Yeah, I'm Clyde from Valley Springs. I'm a businessperson. I'm a landlord, and I've been doing business and being a landlord in this county for approximately 32 years. So right now, you can buy a house in my neighborhood for under $100,000, so you can save the $120,000 or whatever it is to go out and find that out. I'll take all the money I can get, but I'm not going to get a dime from these people. They're not going to help me. They're not going to help my tenants. My tenants are still getting worse, you know, it's, you can't make, so I mean, I'm telling you, so you can just save the money. It's bad out there and you're not going to, I can't build a house for cheap, you can buy it. I can't put the septic in and the water meter and the permits. I can buy a house cheaper, I can pay for those three things. So why would I even think of trying to build a house? So I don't see, you know, I'm just tired of people making money off poor people and poor people don't get the money. I mean, I agree with Peter. I mean, how much of this money is going to go to actually these people that need it? All you're doing, you're just going to go, all the administration costs is going to make a lot of people a lot of money on jobs and stuff, but the poor people's going to still be poor, the housing market's going to still be in the toilet, and I'm not going to build a house for probably five to six years in this county. That's the hard, that's the facts. That's exactly where it's at. So I don't care how much, save the money for the studies. Just save it. I mean, I'm telling you, I'm the guy that's on the ground. I'm the guy with the rubber piece of rope. I'm him, and it's not going to happen. All you're doing is, like Rita, Peter, you're making yourself feel good, but the poor people's going to be just as many poor, if not more. The housing, next year I'll be up there saying you can buy a nice house for under $80,000. You know, because I think last year I was saying here you can buy a nice house for under $150,000. Now it's under $100,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Holly Mines, and I too would like to propose a project, and I am aware, and it's a planning-related project, and I am aware that Ms. Boyce has said, you know, that because there is currently no planning director, that there isn't the staff to take advantage of such funding. However, I guess my counterargument is maybe this is the time, since there's no staff, that there's nobody to take charge of these things, that perhaps one of these planning and technical assistance grants could be used to hire a consultant who would do the work and as a private contractor. So with that in mind, I'll just read you, and I have a copy of these for you, so. Today, the board has asked for citizen input on potential submission of fiscal year 2010, 2011 Community Development Block Grant Program to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. I spoke to Mary Sewicki, Department Head of Cal Works and Human Services Agency, who explained the process of receiving public comment and proposing projects to the board. Now, my name is Gillian Murphy. Now, my next sentence I say, because I didn't have a chance to call together the, the housing stakeholders group that I've been chairing over the last couple of years, I did, after I wrote this testimony yesterday, I had emailed members of the committee, and I did receive responses from six people on that committee. So I do feel that it's legitimate to say that I'm actually representing the committee, because they approved of this presentation. Let's see, where was I? The new housing element was adopted on June 22, 2010, and received certification of compliance with state housing element law from HCD. The letter of compliance dated August 18 states, "The department is pleased to report Calaveras County now meets specific requirements for several state funding programs designed to reward local governments for compliance with state housing element law." So that means we're now eligible for these CDBG grants, and I would like to remind people in the public that we've already paid our taxes, which fund these grants. It's not coming out after we get the grant. It's already come out, and if these CDBG grants don't go to our county, they will go elsewhere. In addition, Housing Element Program H 7.2 Annual Reporting makes the commitment to review and report on implementation of housing element programs. Currently, no progress has been made on implementation of the policies and programs of the housing element, even though there's 14 items in that element that say they will be completed in the first six months, which has now passed. The planning department has been without a director for about three months, and the county budget is severely constrained. So it seems logical that the board would recommend applying for a CDBG Planning and Technical Assistance Grant, which would allow the hiring of a consultant to complete at least one program of the housing element. I looked through the list of programs and found a number of programs that are proposed to be funded by such funds. Some of those programs are not practically considered this time, but there are a few which could be undertaken this year. I would like to submit a list of three possible projects for consideration. I believe each of these would fit the requirements of a Planning and Technical Assistance Grant. Each of these would help us move forward in accomplishing the goals we've set out in the housing element. And I'll just read the title of each one of them, and then you could look over them, and the panel that I understand that will be created to evaluate proposals could, you know, look them up in the housing element or call me. I'd be happy to discuss it with them. Program H 4.5 is a housing condition survey and rehabilitation study. The county shall conduct a housing survey to assess the condition of existing housing stock in targeted communities and determine the need for county-supported rehabilitation programs. So this suggests that they're, rather than talking about people going out and buying new houses or houses that are on the market, many of which the very people who need them have absolutely no money to invest that way, people are currently living in poor conditions. We're talking about surveying housing that's, that's in.
Holly, we're limiting it to three minutes, and you're at three and a half, so I'll give you 15 seconds.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, okay.
So the other two programs would be the creation of a housing coordinator. Obviously, Brenda Gelardi has been too busy to do that coordination, and that's one of the mandates of the housing element. And the other would be to create a housing advisory committee. All of these, the housing coordinator and a housing advisory committee could help to move forward the implementation of the programs that are in the housing element, and they could be funded by such a grant. So I will hand you, I guess, five copies. Is that what you're supposed to?
Thank you. Just give the copies to the board clerk, if you would, Holly. Any other public comments? If so, please come forward. Tanya, if you're used to come forward, then I'm going to come back to staff.
Good morning. I'm Frank Meyer with Habitat for Humanity, and I just heard about this hearing. Excuse me for my ignorance, but I do want to make a little pitch for getting some help with doing some of our Habitat houses. We rely, as you know, primarily on donations, and it's been rough the last few years, to, to raise enough money to, to keep our efforts going forward. And so I'm asking for assistance through CDBG, which I know has a element that will allow for paying for housing costs, and ask for about $50,000 portion of that to go to, and this is under the new, the general GDBG money, not the, not the planning grant, to help us, you know, meet our goals, to continue to serve the working poor and deserving Calaveras families.
Thank you, Frank. Any other public comments? Tanya, would you like to come forward?
Good morning. I'm Tandee Dawson from Burson, and I would like to ask that our county not apply for this grant. It is, it's openly discriminatory on a number of levels, and it redistributes wealth, and it also obviously leads to crony capitalism, capitalism. So I would like to ask that we not apply for this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Morning, Noel.
Noel Helberg. I carry kind of two hats in this discussion, having been on the Housing Coalition Stakeholders Committee and also currently president of Habitat for Humanity Calaveras. I would support both Holly's comments and Frank's comments, as the housing element and the general plan needs in the near future to have some teeth in it and not just be words, as has happened in the past. And that's kind of why I got involved in both of these things, and they're both habitats very effective, as we're putting people in homes, and we want to make sure that the housing element becomes as effective in the new general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm closing public comments. I'll bring the discussion back to staff. Mary, do you have any additional comments?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to give folks some timeframes for this particular process. Right now, we would need to have the application in for the CAO's and the board's review by May 3. The next hearing on the actual application will be May 17. That does need to be posted by May 3, and the application needs to be in by 5:00 PM on May 25. But to be honest with you, if we don't have it there by 8 o'clock, the likelihood is we won't be having funding. So I just want to be aware that we're, folks aware that we're on a very short timeframe once again, based upon a number of people's schedules. The other thing is, in the event that we have more applications than we have the max amount of funding, I recommend that you allow us the opportunity to put together a citizen panel to review and prioritize the applications for you, and then bring that to you. That's some and substance of my comments.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to Jeannie. Jeannie, do you have any comments on this at this time?
I think my only concern with the, the citizen panel is just the timing. Will you have time to come back to the board by the 3rd, since we're already looking at scheduling for board action on the 3rd?
Yeah, we'd have to just grab some people as quickly as possible, to be honest with you, but we'll already have some people in mind.
And I had a question.
Because we didn't exactly hear today an exact amount to know whether we're going to be at or exceed.
I had a question, too. On the, on what's available right now in terms of funding, it's, is it $70,000 total for planning and technical assistance, $35,000 for the general, and $35,000 for the economic development?
There's actually 148 totals, 70 for very specific projects, and then, and then $35,000 for non-specific projects. Those could include things like the housing element updates, GIS mapping, et cetera. Those are examples that were given. So 148 max for jurisdiction, then, then 35 for non-specifics, two of them, up to another 70, and then $70,000 for specific projects.
Okay, wait, stay there, Mary, for a second. Go ahead, Jeannie. You have additional comment?
Well, I think we need some board direction in terms of where you want to go with this, the planning functions as well as the activities, because there seem to be two, two parts to this.
Right.
Okay. Well, historically, what's happened, and, and is staff has brought a recommendation back to the board after the public hearing, and rather than the board trying to allocate up here at this moment of time, board members will go in and talk to either Mary or Jeannie, and they will come back with a recommendation. And I think that, in my opinion, has always been a very good process. And I don't know that you need a citizens committee. I think you can just talk to the citizens, and, and, you know, I don't think you need a formal committee, but together, we certainly don't want a Brown Act committee.
Yeah.
So it's just to talk to whom you need to talk to, 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 you know, make sure that everybody's been included in the discussion. And then I think you need to listen to, to where board members are. Maybe someone will express a preference at this point and then come back with a recommendation.
Yeah.
So, and I think Gary has a question. Gary?
Well, it was just concerning the citizens committee. I'm not sure if I'm in favor of it, because the makeup of it.
Don't have a committee.
Yeah, I'm not, that was my comment. I'm not in favor of that, especially in the short time period that we have.
Sure.
Because the makeup would have to be non-participants, and then a wide range, what communities are being represented and so forth. So it would take too much time, I think, to get by the 3rd.
In the past, actually, I negotiated with the applicants so that we were able to come to some resolution. I'm just saying if, if, if there was a need beyond that. But we've been very successful in the past to negotiate.
If the board has a strong preference, they will communicate that to you or Jeannie. Otherwise, you know, for myself, I'm going to look on, look at a recommendation coming from the two of you, and I don't see that I would be the counter to that. So I'll open up to other board member comments, questions, or staff.
Ms. Murphy, you, there was no dollar amount attached to your comments. Is there, or is that going to be part of your proposal? I mean, I, we have 35 from Amador to All Make Community Action, 50 from Habitat.
To be honest, I didn't put a dollar amount because I wasn't sure that number was integrated in the capacity, but we would do it, we would be more on the 25, I think, rather than.
Okay.
We can use for the 50.
Okay, thank you.
Marita, just for clarification, too, there are two different types of planning and technical assistance grants, and the one Gillian's talking about would fall under the economic development, planning and technical assistance, as opposed to the housing would fall under the general allocation, planning and technical assistance.
Right, right. Hers would be a non-specific, what they call non-specific. The housing element is the non-specific.
Right.
And so that's maxed at 35.
I know we've been trying for years to get a facility for the homeless, for the mentally ill, and if Clyde wanted to provide that, he could. And then we could skip going through the planning grant, but since I don't see any member of the community coming up with a facility or donating a building or offering to build a facility, I, you know, I would support that. I think we have to get something on the ground, and it's, everybody says, yes, we do, but I don't want it in my backyard. I'm concerned about the feasibility portion. I guess I say that to Amador to All Make Community Action. We already know that. I think behavioral health, mental health have already told us that. I'd like to see more in the planning process that there was something more specific, and then we could do the environmental and the public hearing on that portion. The portion that Ms. Murphy talked about, I've talked to many businesses in my district. I'm assuming other supervisors have. And, and I've heard Ms. Lackey talk to community groups, to business groups, and the kinds of things they're asking for dovetail really well with what is being asked for. And what I've liked about what they're doing is it's on a one-on-one. It's going into a business. It's talking to a business. It's finding out what their specific needs are, and, and then helping them with the process, which is what your organization will help do, will help bring it to fruition. So I support that, and we have continually supported Habitat. Habitat has always put something on the ground, and anything that we could do to put it on the ground, I would support that also. And of course, I would bring up Lilac Park again, but I think that's, can't I have part of the $30,000 for non-projects?
Okay, other board comments?
Okay, thank you.
I think we have one from Gary. Do you have anything additional, Dara?
Go ahead, Gary, if you had something.
No, go ahead.
Oh, well, he's thinking. Can I, I'm just asking.
Your time is up.
No, I'm starting again. Considering what's happening with the state federal budget, I thought that funding for CDBG was going to be drastically reduced or eliminated. Is that still on the drawing board?
The latest thing that I got concerning, not this particular set, this is for 2010, 11, okay? And so this is already basically kind of like last year's funding. The new one has, right now, I read yesterday, a 14.3 instead of a 50% cut in CDBG. And then the Community Services Block Grant, which is a different funding source, got a 2.9% cut instead of a 50% cut.
Thank you.
Dara?
I just was going to relay the observation in regards to Clyde's comments earlier about that none of the money would particularly benefit his tenants or him as a, as a landowner or landlord. You know, as I drive up here to the government center, I can't help but notice there are a couple of homes that are small homes right here on St. Charles Street in San Andreas that are for rent. Could it, could it not be that some of those would be used for, I know part of the, part of the, the structure for people who suffer from these ability, you know, disabilities and things like that, is for them to be close to, to services, you know, like, you know, you know, health, health services and transportation services and things like that. And like I said, there's a couple of houses I've seen right on St. Charles Street as I drive back and forth to the government center that have for rent signs or some kind of thing there. Could some of this be used so that, obviously, these are, I would, I'm assuming, people that live here locally that have homes for rent. And if there's going to be money spent on that, I mean, the end, the end game would be, I think everything would, everybody would agree that it would be in the best interest to create some kind of, you know, brick-and-mortar facility, you know, when times are better and we have more funding. I mean, certainly, you know, everybody remembers the joke. I mean, when I was a kid, you know, my grandfather used to say things to me like, "Keep acting like that, you're going to end up in Napa." Well, you know, Napa doesn't truly exist in the way that it did 30 years ago, and these people need somewhere, you know, they need a roof over their head. So, you know, I think that most people would consider that the, the real end goal would be to have some permanency in, if not, because the state's not supporting, if, you know, if we get funding to provide those things in a county area. But in the interim, you know, based on the money that we do have, would it be possible for some of these homes that sit vacant right now and are being offered as rent to be utilized in that capacity so that these landlords could benefit possibly with the issue that Mr. Clyde clapped on?
Beware of using common sense on a problem like this.
Darn it. I just can't get away from that common sense. I try all the time.
The California Mental Health Direct, I'm Rita Downs, Behavioral Health Services. California Mental Health Directors Association has been working for the last three years with the small counties who have recognized that the funding strategy for this housing money doesn't make sense for small counties. We have not made any headway at all. So our money will be moving to Cal HFA for then a loan submission process that ATCA will be using. We have tried everything to use that money for rents instead of using it to buy housing, or use it right now to just go buy housing at $80,000 or $100,000.
And then have, in conjunction with Habitat and have, you know.
Yeah, it doesn't work that way. So we, we are stuck in this kind of crazy process. But we will have, at the end, permanent supportive housing that will be allocated for persons with serious mental illnesses and their families, if needed, for the next 20 years. So, once it's built, it has to be available for the next 20 years, which is good. Also, I want to say that we use some of our Mental Health Services Act funds to assist to say that we use some of our Mental Health Services Act funds to assist our homeless, mentally ill with rental subsidies in the meantime. So we are doing some of that. People who are mentally ill often have very little income, to no income, so they can't afford even the current rates of rent with their social security stipends that they get. So you make a lot of sense. Why can't we just do that? It would be nice if we could, but we can't. And we have really tried.
Not, not why can't we. I was hoping that you...
To translate that money into rental assistance. And we have not been able to do that. But I appreciate the thoughts.
Yeah.
But thank you for the heads up on rentals also. We are always looking for rentals to help our consumers with their housing.
Any other board comments? I'll give my comments then. As I stated earlier, I support staff working with the applicants and coming back with a recommendation. I fully anticipate I will support that, that recommendation. As far as the housing market, I think we would all be much better off if the government managed to get out of housing altogether, and let housing just stand on its own in a free-market process. They should privatize Freddie and Fanny, and they should eliminate the Federal Housing Authority. We shouldn't have a housing element, in my opinion, in the general plan, but it's required by state law. I mean, the government has made a debacle out of housing. We have spent millions and millions in government-directed money and haven't achieved any objective, except to put a higher burden on the private sector. But this is coming, and I will support, I fully intend to support, you know, and this is just something that would totally surprise me, staff's recommendation. But, you know, how many billions of dollars we've dedicated to housing and the like, and HUD, and just everything, and it's, if the government would just get out of housing in its entirety and quit addressing it, we would all, in my opinion, be much better off, including the poor people. So having said that, do you wish, Jeannie, to have this item continued to a particular date, or just to complete the item today and then reschedule?
I think we should complete the item today, and we'll come back to you with an application after talking to the applicants.
Okay, very good. You will reschedule.
Yeah, we'll do the next step in the process.
Okay, I have board support. That then completes the comments on item seven. We'll take no official action.
That's correct.
Other than the direction to staff to reschedule it when it's appropriate.
Yeah, we'll come back to you with an application. Because of the tight timeframe for the application to be submitted to the state board's action, we'll actually come back to you.
Okay, I'll just call the board. Are you for basically allowing it to be rescheduled, and we'll call item seven completed? Darren?
Yes.
Okay.
Just one thought I add to that real quick. For those of you who have a disdain for, you know, this type of interaction with the government, I want to, before I forget, I did have a brief audience with Kristin Olson, our Assemblywoman, on Sunday at the taxpayers' rally in Valley Springs. And I brought to her the concerns of our board relayed many times, which is, you know, at the local level, we don't have a lot of opportunity to make changes in this arena. But this is something that is, these are policies and procedures that are made at the state and federal level. So I took the opportunity on Sunday, I just wanted to let you know I'm reporting that, to let her know that it was the wish of the board that they would address some of those things, and some of the policy and procedures that they make at the state level. And she noted that.
Gary, are you for...
Yes.
Okay, Marita.
Aren't you going to ask for the vote?
No, we're just pulling to...
That's fine.
Just to give direction, to bring it back and to call item seven completed. So we have completed item seven. We will move forward to item eight, discussion and possible action, appointment of applicants to serve on the Area 12 Agency on Aging, Rancho Calaveras Road Committee, and the Public Education and Governmental Television Commission. So this is a board clerk action.
I'm fine with Area 12 on aging.
Okay, where's everybody else on Area 12? Well, let's go to Area 12. We have one applicant, Susan Rich. Does anybody wish to be opposed to Susan Rich, since being she's the only applicant? Seeing none? Okay, let's go to service area number one, Rancho Calaveras, one applicant, Brian Lay, for a term to expire on 12/31/14, and an alternate member for a term to expire on 12/31/13, one applicant, Alice Rain. Do you support both of those applicants, Darren?
I do.
Okay.
I do support both of those applicants. And I would like it, for the record, to be known that, in the language here, it's described in two different ways. It's described in one way as County Service Area One. In another area, it's described as Rancho Calaveras Road Committee.
Service area number one.
County Service Area Number One is the correct definition.
Okay, that's fine.
There are more responsibilities.
Does any other board member have a problem with either Brian or Alice? Seeing none? Then we'll go to the PEG Commission, and that's in my district. I have two applicants for one opening, Sarah Lunsford and Thomas Pratt. My understanding, Jim, is that Sarah Lunsford, being a paid employee, would have a conflict. Is that correct? And that was your determination?
Yes, actually, it was.
Okay.
I forgot about that. But yes, I was asked about that.
Okay, and your, and your determination was that Sarah would have a conflict, and she should not be appointed?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So then, with that recommendation from council, I will recommend Thomas Pratt. Does any other board member have a problem with Thomas Pratt? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to make the appointments as we outlined in our discussion.
So I'll move into Gary.
Do I have a second? Come on, you guys.
I'll second the one.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Tofanelli. I have a second by Supervisor Spelman. Do I have to the board discussion? All in favor, so indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. It passes on a 401 absent vote of the Board of Supervisors. That completes item eight. We'll move forward to item nine, amended order awarding a contract to the Calaveras Enterprise, a local Calaveras County adjudicated newspaper for the county's legal advertising, and authorizing the county administrative officer to sign all related documents. I see we do have somebody from the Valley Springs News, and a handout that was given to the board. And I see we do have someone present from the enterprise. But Jeannie, this is your baby, so why don't you initiate the discussion?
That's right. Yes. Zachariah is actually going to present on behalf of the initiation.
Should have looked up.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Zachariah Alm, County Administrative Office. We went to bid for legal advertising for Calaveras County. There are two papers that are eligible to bid. Those are the Valley Springs News and the Calaveras Enterprise. They've both been adjudicated by Superior Court of California to be a newspaper of general publication. We received bids back. We needed clarification. We sent a request for secondary information. And after reviewing all of it, it is staff's recommendation that we go with Calaveras Enterprise as our legal advertising publication. The reasons are subscriptions. They have a much larger subscription base than the Valley Springs News, and they are currently in, distributed in all the communities, major communities in Calaveras County.
Okay, that's staff's recommendation. I'll bring it back for the board for any comments before I basically open it up to the public. So are there any board comments at this time? Darren?
The only note I need to make at this time is that the Valley Springs News, well, it currently doesn't distribute to all the required communities this time. I want, I made known for the record that it, you know, the law does give them 60 days to come into compliance with that. And they have heretofore in the past been a county-wide distribution paper, when it was known by a different name. So let's leave it at that for now. There'll be more comments.
Okay, so any other board comments? Okay, I'll open it up for public comments. Are there any public comments on item nine? If you would be so kind, then state your name for the record.
Nick Baptista. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning to the Board of Members, the Board of Supervisors, and to staff. I want to commend the board and staff for bringing this contract to a bid. It's the first time in four years. And already, the board has saved $2,600 by bringing it to bid. That was outlined in your staff analysis. And that is because the paper that has the bid now shaved 25 cents off of the rate that they charged the county for publishing the legal advertising public notices. But there's a substantial more amount of savings if you go with the low bidder on this contract. And to begin with, the Valley Springs News is offering a rate of $4 an inch, while the enterprise has a rate of $6.75 an inch. That's a saving right off the top of 41%. If you look at the, each newspaper is asked to submit samples, sample quote, on various items that are printed under legal notices. And those were the Notice of a Public Hearing, Property Tax Default, and the Board of Supervisors Agenda. When you look at those figures, the Valley Springs News comes in at more than 50% less than the enterprise. And that is because of, comes in two respects. First off, we're submitting a bid that has a lower per-unit price. But second, we followed the county specifications in the bidding process, using the correct point size, using the correct measurements for your column width. That saves you almost an additional 20%, because instead of printing something that takes up 10 inches, by following the county specs, we can do it in eight inches. So with the savings that you have in just the rate, that's $31,470. And in the savings, if the publication follows the county's specifications, that's another savings of $14,686. So the total estimated savings, if you go with the low bidder, we believe is $46,156. Your staff projects that you'll be spending about $73 during this fiscal year. They say it's trending down a bit, but I think the general plan is coming. That's going to be a tremendous cost as far as public notices and legal advertising. So I just wanted to say that I think that we sharpened our pencil, and we gave you the best deal possible. And I'd like you to consider us to be the provider, the printer of your legal advertisements and notices. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Good morning.
Ralph Aldridge, on behalf of the Calaveras Enterprise. And Buzz Eggleson is here with me today as well. First, let me say, I'm open to any questions you may have, and Buzz would help to answer any questions you may have. So beyond that, I think there's only a couple of things that need to be said. One is, what are the differences between the two bids? And what is the purpose of legal advertising? Take the latter first. The purpose of legal advertising is to make certain, that certain information that the county is required, generally by the state, to give out to the public, is actually seen by as large a segment of the public as possible, and read, hopefully, as well by that segment of the public. That's the whole purpose of legal advertising. What the major difference between the two bids here is that we will be sending this out to something on the order of 5,000 paid readers of our newspaper. And I don't know exactly the numbers for the Valley Springs News, but it can't be more than a third of that number. And I think that's being generous. So, yes, you pay more to get more. It costs more to send, to prepare a newspaper and send it out to 5,000 or 6,000 people than it does to 1,000 or 2,000 people, as you might imagine. It costs more to print and publish that paper, and it costs more to distribute that paper as well. But the benefit received by the citizens of this county is, they get more copies out there, more people see it, more people read it. That's the benefit. Now, in terms of the bid price, we're told that you've already saved money because we were forced to come out and bid. We've simply been charging the same price that we had charged as a result of the last bid. And when this bid was offered to us, we sat down and looked at this, and we decided what the best price was that we could offer today, just as we had the last time. And when we did that, we also looked at the specification that called for a print size that, quite frankly, is almost illegible. I understand the notion that you want to try to get the size down, since you pay by the inch. That's the way this kind of advertising is done. But at the same time, it, there's a limit as to how far you can go, to the point where you're saying to the citizens, this isn't important enough information for you to read. It's important enough that we have to actually publish it, but we don't care whether you read it or not, because we understand you can't see it hardly the way it is. We felt it was very important to keep the size of that print adequate, to be able to have readers be able to read it. And that's why we dropped the inch rate and bid on a print size that was a reasonable print size. We feel that's, that that is important. And, and so that's an explanation of, number one, why you would pay more for ours, and why we have tried to put a print size in that was rational for the readers and useful for the readers. And we have given some discount on the inch rate in order to make that easier for the county to agree with us. Does anyone have any questions that I could...
Any questions by board members?
I got a couple questions.
Sure.
Ralph, it says, "Total circulation, 5561." How do you arrive at that number?
Well, this is paid circulation. And so you arrive at by taking your total mail subscribers, M-A-I-L. So there's a certain number of people who subscribe to the paper, and there's papers delivered by mail each month, each week. And then you take the pay, the people who pay for it in the racks, put their 50 cents in the rack, or people who buy it at the counter at the stores and so forth, where it's available for sale. You total eat all of that up each week, and that tells you what your paid subscription was for each issue. You total that up for the month, and then you kind of average it out, and that's how you get an average for the month. And you total it up for the year, and you get an average for the year. So it's always changing, you know? If there's a, if the Board of Supervisors has a meeting that is particularly interesting, our numbers go up. If it's particularly slow week, as far as news is concerned, our numbers go down. And that's true of all newspapers. So it's always a snapshot of a given issue, and then a running average that you look at over longer periods of time.
I'm looking at some numbers that were provided to us in our attachment A, and I'm assuming that you provided those numbers for this attachment.
I'm assuming that as well.
And it says, "Total circulation, 5561." And it has number of paid subscriptions, 2,857, number of mailed subscriptions, M-A-I-L-E-D, 2621, then number of newspapers sold, 1,413. And then it has number distributed without cost. What is number distributed without cost, and is that number included in your total circulation numbers?
Can you direct me to where that is? Because I need to look at...
I'm looking at the attachment A, current bid, analysis of bid results.
Okay.
Is number, none of the numbers add up. Nick adds up when I add number of paid subscriptions, 748, and number of newspapers sold, 319. That adds up to 1,067, which he claims is total circulation. But no matter how I add your numbers up, none of them come up to 5561. But no matter how I add your numbers up, none of them come up to 5561.
Well, I'm afraid I can't do that for you right here. And I can think of a couple of reasons why they, these numbers might vary. I can go back and get you those numbers for sure. There are a couple of times, well, there's one time each year in which every newspaper that sends its mailed subscriptions out has to calculate what its average was for the past six months and publish that for the U.S. Post Office, the Postal Service. Called a publisher sworn statement. It's done in October of each year. These might be the numbers that were used for that publisher sworn statement, but I'm not sure. I'm thinking of when this bid was submitted and so forth. And then the other thing is that the, I believe the bid only asked for paid circulation within the county. We mail some subscriptions outside the county. So there would be some difference between the number that we gave for the actual circulation within the county and what our paid subscriptions and total sales would be on any given issue. But I can find out more carefully, you know, what the numbers were and what the source of the numbers was for this submission. I can tell you this from my own experience, that over the years, as with all newspapers, we've suffered some decline in circulation. And we keep track of that pretty carefully. And our advertisers keep track of that because, you know, the rate that they're prepared to pay for advertising has some relationship to circulation. For example, our advertising rates are higher than the Valley Springs News advertising rates because an advertiser understandably won't pay as much for fewer papers being distributed. And so we always have to keep track of what our circulation is, and we provide that information to our advertisers so that they understand that in making their purchasing decisions. So I can tell you this in a general sense, even though the numbers may vary from day to day over this period of the last 10 years, the highest circulation we've had has been somewhere around about 6,500 total, when you take both circulation and the paid in the racks and in the stores. And the lowest has been somewhere around about 5,000. And we're probably closer to that 5,000 number today than we have been in the past. Those I'm confident of because I see those numbers all the time.
Again, though, can you tell me what number distributed without cost is?
Yes.
And if it's included in the total circulation?
It would not be included in the total circulation for purposes of this bid because it's, the bid is only for paid circulation within the county.
Okay.
So the number distributed without cost is, from time to time, we sample areas in order to solicit new subscriptions. So we'll send, we'll decide, okay, Valley Springs, this month. Usually, we do it for about 30 days because we want to give people who are not subscribers an opportunity to get exposed to our paper, and we think we'll sell a lot of them on becoming subscribers or at least buying it at the store if they do. And so we will then go out, and usually, I think it's about 500 at a time, and we will toss those into driveways in those areas unless somebody calls and says we don't want it, and we'll give them essentially a free month. And hopefully, at the end of that time, they'll decide whether to subscribe or not. We haven't been doing that all of the time, but we've had a number of these initiatives where we've sent, where we've done those samplings. And so the number that was used here apparently was a number that was at a time when we were doing that kind of sampling. But that's not included in the numbers that are used for the bid.
Okay. And then I have one other question for you, Ralph.
Sure.
Says, "Where is publication printed?" It says, "Valley Springs News is printed in Valley Springs." It says, "Calaveras Enterprise is printed in Galt."
Yes.
And the reasons it's printed in Galt and outside Galt and outside the county?
Because, and you'll find this if you look around the newspaper industry, it is too expensive to run small presses anymore. We had a press for, when I bought this newspaper, we had a press that was already, I think, about 30 years old at the time. And there's a significant expense in running those small presses compared with the cost of getting printing done by people on the outside. So Galt is a place where they've got a large press operation. They do a lot of commercial printing, printing for other newspapers around, and so it made sense for us economically to move our printing to Galt. We did that a couple of years ago, and we sold the press.
Thank you.
Okay. And no other questions?
Well, Ralph, you stated in your public comments that controversy, the more controversial the board meetings are, the more subscriptions go out, and I think you should pay me for being on the Board of Supervisors and keeping your subscription numbers up.
We thought about that, but then we decided that we'd have to spread that to all of the board members, and we'd only encourage more of that.
Well, I deserve most of it.
That's up for debate, sir, and you don't have three votes on it.
But thank you all for whatever.
Before you leave the podium, Ralph, what is your definition of sustainability?
I have a question I'd like Mr. Aldridge to speak to. In your statement just given, in the cost-benefit analysis, the analogy that you used several times was in terms of the benefit to the county and the benefit to the potential readers who hopefully, as I'll quote you, hopefully that they read those. So you're substantiating your cost, which is almost twice as much as the lower bidder, as a benefit for people to read those things. However, when Supervisor Taffanelli asked you about your paper being printed in Galt, which is outside the county, your quote was that it's too expensive to run small presses anymore. So it seems to me that there's a conflict in those two statements. You're stating that you're charging more money, and it's a benefit, and we should logically choose your paper because it has larger distribution and pay the higher price, which is double than the next bid. However, in the same breath, you're also saying that it's too expensive to run a small press in this county, therefore you're outsourcing it to San Joaquin County, to Galt. So it would seem to me that there's a disparity in those two statements. If it is that you're looking to benefit the people in the county and you're charging us a higher rate or asking us to pay a higher rate for that benefit, it seems to me that you would take that additional money that you're charging almost twice as much for that benefit and upgrade or revitalize your printing so that we can create jobs that most assuredly left this county when the printing was outsourced to Galt. I'd like you to speak to that, please.
Well, let me say, I didn't use the term "cost-benefit," and I didn't purport to offer a cost-benefit analysis. What I said is that when you buy printing, advertising, just like anything else, you pay more to get more. If you buy television advertising, it's based upon the number of households that are viewing the television program. If you buy radio advertising, it's based upon the number of people who are within your signal and who are listening to your radio advertising. If you buy advertising on a billboard, it costs you more to put it up on a billboard on Highway 5 than it does on Mountain Ranch, or even Highway 49 than it does in Mountain Ranch, simply because there are more automobiles going by and your advertising is more effective because of that. And that's what I was saying is that public advertising here that we're talking about now has the same concept, which is it's supposed to be sent out to the most people possible. The whole point of the public advertising is to advise as many people as possible in the county of the important things that are happening, like the Board of Supervisors' meeting and the agenda. That's one of the items that's to be published. So you want more people, not fewer people in the county, to know what your agenda is so that they'll come and watch your controversial meetings and attend and participate. And so when you, you can't get more without paying something more because it costs more to produce more. It costs more to produce a luxury automobile than it does to produce a subcompact. You pay more for that, and it will actually give you better performance as well. That's the idea that I'm talking about here. Now, the question of whether we, as a business, are acting properly in cutting our costs where we need to cut our costs, that's another thing entirely. And I think all businesses have an obligation to their ownership or their shareholders or whatever to operate in a way that's the most efficient. And I can tell you, for newspapers, that it's not unusual these days for newspapers to lose money. In fact, it's more common than it is the exception. And that's because newspapers are going through a period where there's a tremendous amount of pressure on newspapers in terms of the alternatives for advertising and in terms of just the reduction in advertising expenditures generally. And newspapers have lived on advertising over the years. And circulation has been going down as well, and that's the other major source of income for newspapers. So it's not unusual for a newspaper in a community like ours to have to be careful about its costs, much more careful than it has ever had to be in the past. I think we all know there's at least three major newspaper chains, The Tribune and so forth, in the United States, that are in bankruptcy right now. It was unheard of for a newspaper to be in bankruptcy up until the last five or 10 years in this country. So, yes, we have had to cut our costs in order to be able to live within our means. And, yes, that has meant that we would, we no longer employ the press operators that we employed when we had our press running. But the alternative in the long run would be that this newspaper would enter into bankruptcy along with some of those others, and that risk would be that this, you know, this community would lose all of that employment if that business can't continue to survive and live within its means. That's what that has to do with. So I hope that answers your questions.
Well, just to, yeah, one of the things you said in regards to my question was, again, you're talking about the benefit of larger circulation numbers. You gave the comparison of a billboard. And we've had some discussions in the past in this county about where billboards might be located, and I don't think there's a chance in heck that there's ever going to get to be one on Mountain Ranch. But anyway, one of the things you said was, again, going back to the similar analogy, that you pay more to get more. You know, Mr. Baptista, one of the proprietors of the Valley Springs News, brought to this board today and to the people assembled here and watching at home, a very interesting statistic, and that was that, you know, we have been paying more since 2007 when you last received the contract, and it hasn't gone out to bid since then. So I can only imagine in my mind that if he's proposing a bid that's half the cost of yours, that the county has been paying more for a number of years. And that's something that doesn't sit well with me very well at all. There's been no bidding contract, there's been a no-bid contract basically in-state since 2007, in that now that we have an open bidding process again, we see the same two bidders, one which is half the cost, and I don't even know why we're having this debate. I mean, you said that, you know, your newspaper has to live within its, within its means and so forth, therefore you've terminated the jobs of the printing folks who used to work at your organization and outsourced it to Galt. But yet you want us to pay the higher price for your publication.
Well, let me, let me try to answer that by saying this. We had no influence over whether or not the contract is put out to bid or when it's put out to bid. That's something that the county decides, and we respond. Second, what we did is, when the county didn't want to go out to bid, for whatever reason, over the years, we've said, "We won't change the price. We'll just leave the price the same." We didn't, I suppose we could have increased the price at that point if we thought it was appropriate, but we said we will simply continue to sell at the same price. Third, the price we charge the county for legal advertising is the best price that we offer any advertiser in our newspaper. That's the same price that we offer nonprofits as well, although there's a little bit of a translation, but that's what we strive for in coming up with an inch rate there. And so what that means is that the advertisers who are normal, regular, commercial advertisers are paying more for that space. That also demonstrates that it is worth more. They wouldn't be paying more if it wasn't worth more. And Mr. Baptista's newspaper, let's just assume that if their numbers are, they've got a third of the subscriptions, a third of the number of newspapers that they put out, less than a third of the number of employees, their costs are probably about a third or less than what our costs are. So their price, unless they're really going to gouge the county, is always going to be significantly below our price. And in fact, if their price is only about half of our price, they've got a very healthy profit margin built into that price. Whereas, we're basically pricing that advertising at the lowest rate that we have available. So I hope that helps to put the pricing into perspective and to explain what I mean when I say, "You have to expect to pay more to get more," in part because it costs more and also in part because everyone recognizes that the benefit of advertising has everything to do with the number of people who are ultimately going to read it. And that applies to public advertising as well as private advertising.
Just one last question.
Sure.
First, a statement, then a question. First of all, you know, I was watching for this bid with anticipation, I have to say. And I want to commend you for your honesty in terms of where the paper is printed and published. I think that that shows integrity, and I'm an advocate of that. My question to you is that, at the time, in 2007, the last time that it went out to bid, I'm assuming that your paper at that time qualified, under the California state regulations required, that anybody that was adjudicated or was able to be adjudicated legally conformed to the printing and publishing inside the county. Actually, the same city is what it says in the law. At the time, I'm assuming that you did at the time in 2007. So my question to you now is, while I praise your honesty and integrity for noting where your print paper is published and printed, beans that it's not printed in the county, and the state law requires, as a pass-through, the county has a pass-through for state funds to take care of these obligations. The state has given a mandate, and there is a code of law that says you shall, not under best circumstances or for the benefit of the public, it says you shall print and publish. So I want to know, under what basis you feel that your adjudication is still valid based on your own submission that the paper is not printed in the county?
Well, Mr. Spelman, I don't know whether, where you got your legal opinions on this.
From the California state code, sir.
And that's what I deal with as well. And I, as a lawyer, have actually handled adjudication cases for other newspapers in the past, so I know that law quite well.
So in your opinion, you still qualify for adjudication?
Absolutely. There is an order from the court here in Calaveras that adjudicates this newspaper. Until, unless and until that order is changed, we are, in fact, an adjudicated newspaper in this county. Now, let me explain if I can. There are two provisions in the law that permit adjudication. One of those provisions requires you to be printed and published in the county. And all that it requires by way of circulation is that you have a, quote, "bona fide list" of paid subscribers, okay? There's a second provision that does not require you to be printed or published in the county. So in other words, you can be published anywhere and printed anywhere. You have to be published in the county, but publishing just means that you distribute your newspaper there. But you can be printed anywhere, and there's a slightly higher requirement under those circumstances for your paid circulation, that you have a substantial number of paid subscribers. subscribers. And the law has been interpreted to mean that a substantial number would always include anybody who has the most circulation in any given county. And as much as 2% of the population of the county, I believe, has been considered substantial. So we certainly qualify under that provision. If anybody feels that our, that feels that the order that grants us status as an adjudicated newspaper in Calaveras is somehow inappropriate, then there's a remedy for that. You go to the court and you seek to have our adjudication overturned. Nobody has ever done that. And I submit they haven't done that because if they've gone to a lawyer, a lawyer has told them, "You'll lose." They are properly adjudicated under the law, whether they're, no matter where they're printed.
Thank you. Any other board questions or comments? Thank you. Nick, please come back up if you have some additional comments of your own.
Well, again, I think that it's great that the board is putting this out to bid, and I think the board and the citizens of the county are going to benefit from this. Ralph didn't quite have his circulation figures, but he did mention the audit back in October. And I have a copy of the Statement of Ownership, Management, and Circulation of the Calaveras Enterprise. And in this statement, the numbers are totally different than what was presented to you. And the bottom-line number is that the total distribution of the newspaper, according to the information that they sent to the post office, was forty-five hundred, four-thousand five hundred and seventy-four, which I think is quite different.
What dates on that?
Yeah. I will, this is my own copy, but if the board supervisors were to turn that to me, I would keep it, my own records. Ralph is correct that they do have the larger circulation, I'm not going to argue that. But what I wouldn't want to bring to the board's attention is, and it's can be proven historically, the newspaper of record in the county probably gains by that, 1,000 subscribers. To use it as an example, when this board gave the Daily News, at that time owned by Frank Ekblom, the contract, the newspaper had a circulation of 250, I think. When the bid came back two years later, the Daily News at that time had a circulation of almost 1,300. I was at the, I was at the Enterprise at the time. When we received the bid, our circulation went up 1,000. So you're looking about putting 1,000 subscribers into play. That's probably why Ralph and I are both here, arguing vehemently for you to give the contract to our paper. So, under the specifications that the county put out in this request for proposal, it is in the contract that the newspaper has to be distributed in almost all the communities in this, in this county. We take that to heart. We also see this as a way to piggyback and increase our circulation, so it is our intent to substantially change our business plan and substantially increase the circulation of the newspaper. Ralph talked about profit margins, that my profit margin is very healthy by submitting this bid. I will say, my costs will also go up by submitting this bid, and I have put those costs into consideration when I made this bid. And those costs being buying more news racks, distributing the newspaper in a larger circulation area, more paper, and everything else. So I don't think that I'm trying to gouge you as it was implied by Ralph's statement about the profit margin. Any questions?
Nick, I got a couple of questions for you. It says here, under the attachment A, the current bid, the one of his attachment A that I was talking about earlier.
Yeah.
It says, "Free website posting." You both have answered yes. However, being two, both of the websites, Calaveras Enterprise website is maintained pretty much daily, your website is not.
Correct.
What is the intent for your website as far as keeping it up to date if you get this contract?
We would, we would post the legals as soon as we received them to our website. Also, Gary, if you looked, did you have, was it difficult or was it easy to find your county legal notices on the Enterprise website?
Well, you clicked on.
Okay.
Yes, you clicked on, yeah.
And we will make it as easy.
Okay. I have another question for you, and that has to do with the grand jury report. Apparently, your proposal would be that it would be, instead of an insert, it would be part of the newspaper itself, printed on the actual page of the newspaper?
That is how I, that is how I made the bid. It can be any way the grand jury or the county wants it.
So you would be willing to go to an insert, and then some of those inserts could be distributed outside the newspaper itself?
Yes.
Or made available to people?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's the only questions I have, Nick, right now.
Excuse me. Maria, did you say you had some questions?
Yeah, Nick, I had some, but I need to ask, I need to ask Zachariah a couple of questions first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Zachariah, when you look at the examples of the point size?
Yes.
Is true that what we asked for is hardly readable?
What we asked for is what is required by law. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was my question. Thank you. Hey, you're good.
Yeah, the print size in the bid is what's actually in the code as the minimum print size.
Okay.
Sorry for interrupt.
And, oh, all right. No, all right. Go ahead. How, what was your however? Did you have a however?
Oh, no, I didn't have a however. No, I'm sorry.
Oh, all right. And when we went out to bid, did we request a certain number to be printed? You know, like, we want you to bid on 5,000 copies?
No, we did not.
Okay. And what about for the grand jury report? Did we say we wanted 5,000 copies printed or?
We did not, no.
Okay. So each paper was allowed to pick whatever number they wanted?
And the way that they want to do it, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baptista, I have some questions. If the point size increased, can you do it at the same cost?
We can do it at the same cost per column inch, but the length would increase, your column inches would increase.
Okay.
It's just a matter of matter.
Well, I'm at, I, I can't read it.
Right.
And, and, I mean, it's very difficult to read, and, I mean, I'm just asking that question. Also, how many papers are you planning on printing? Or is that going to depend that people are going to have to then subscribe or?
In, in the letter on the request for proposal, we mentioned that we would be offering special subscription rates to increase circulation.
Okay.
But at first, what we were probably going to do is print up extra copies of the newspaper without the guaranteed subscribers and put them in newsstands and take them to the outline, to our outline communities.
Okay.
So probably you're seeing an influx right off the bat of about 400 more copies of the paper.
Also, in your supplemental information letter?
Yeah.
You said, "We'd like to partner with the county library system?"
Yes.
And we'll distribute free of charge?
Free of charge.
An ample number of copies to each of the, I'm assuming each of the libraries?
Yes.
So how many is an ample number?
However, how, how, how many we can, when we begin the, I haven't even begun those discussions because they don't have the contract. But I would, we would talk to the library, see how much, how many papers they can take, and then monitor it from there.
Okay.
But again, I'd say that's part of the, the 400, just in the startup.
So, so if you distributed 10 to all of them at the first time, and then they say they want away the first day, "We need 20," then you would increase to 20?
Yeah.
And if they said, "Okay, we need so forth," I think that's what he means by monitoring.
Exactly.
Okay. So, and you can do that under the same cost, because you're going to increase your volume?
Correct.
And there's no additional cost?
Once we sign the contract, we're staying.
So the only thing that would change is if we increase the point size, then you're going to increase the cost?
If you increase, if there's a change order.
Per column inch.
If there's a change order, and if you ask us and know full well what you're doing, instead of us assuming?
Right.
We would change it to meet your specifications.
Okay. Also, the news in your paper?
Yes.
The Valley Springs had it before. I, it was not a usable paper in the Ebbets Pass area because it had no news from, you know, in the Ebbets Pass area. Are you going to change the type of news that you then, you're now going to do county news versus the Valley Springs area?
We will concentrate on Valley Springs, but we will have a more of an influx of countywide news if, if we are fortunate to get this contract.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions?
I do, of Mr. Baptista. I just want to clarify for the record a statement that I believe you made, so I'm going to paraphrase it back to you.
Okay.
And see if this is an agreeable interpretation. You stated that, at the time, the Daily News was adjudicated and received the bid contract for publishing legals a number of years ago.
I think it was about 19.
At that time, you were in the employment of the Calaveras Enterprise?
No.
No?
No, it was before I arrived at the Calaveras Enterprise.
Okay. But you, you, okay, so I got that statement.
But on the subsequent bid, I was at the Calaveras Enterprise.
Okay.
And I'm citing figures, I'm citing figures from Frank Ekblom's original proposal to the county.
Gotcha.
And I, I think I said 250, but I think it was about 235, and I have it in, I have it in the supplemental letter that I sent to the county. It was 235 that he had at the time.
And what year was that? Do you know?
I'm going to say 1998 or 1999.
Okay, so 1999.
2001, per your lead.
It was 2001?
Okay. So in the year, in the two, in the year 2000 census of Calaveras County, there were approximately 43,000 people living in the county in 2000. We just completed the 2010 census, and they're telling us that there's about 46,000 people that live in the county. So with only an increase of about approximately 3,000 people in total residence of the county, the paper in 2000 receiving the bid had a mere subscription level of 235 to 250 subscribers approximately, and they were the successful award, awarded, successfully were awarded the bid, okay?
Yeah.
Your paper currently has how many subscriptions?
Almost 1,100.
Okay. So the subscription level or number of subscribers in your paper has increased fourfold as comparison to 10 years ago, when it was prior, they called the, the Daily News?
Right. When, when Frank lost the bid, he lost subscribers. When we bought the newspaper, it was down to about 350 subscribers, and then we built it back up at the height. It was about 1,300. And then with the recession, it's gone down to a little under 1,100.
And let me, let me clarify this statement as well. Both in terms of the Daily News, as well as the Calaveras Enterprise, of which you were an employee of the Calaveras Enterprise when they received the winning bid a number of years ago, you're saying that both papers increased in circulation by approximately 1,000 new, new subscribers based solely or in conjunction with?
I would rather use the term "in conjunction," I don't want to say "based solely."
Yeah, in conjunction with the, the winning bid for.
But I think I can provide the paperwork that would show that, in-conjunction migration.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments of Nick?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
It has to do with statements in the contract. And I'm going to pose a question to Ralph also. In the contract itself, item number 10, says, "Contractor shall indemnify and hold harmless to county and its officers and employees from and against any and all claims, demands, suits, damages, injury, and liability, including costs, expenses incurred in connection therewith, however caused resulting from, arising out of, or in any way connected with the performance of the contract." I'm assuming, and this contract doesn't state it, and I, and I think it needs to state it, that we need, and I'm assuming that you both have liability insurance, and it's not asking to produce a certificate of that, but I would like to see that wordy verbiage in here, that you have a current liability policy. We give 30-day notice of when it is going to be terminated. I'm assuming, assuming both of you don't have a problem with that. Also, supply the county with certificates of workers' comp in current, keep it current. And as they come up annually due, that you produce the new certificates? Either one of you have problems with that?
No, no problem.
Being included in here? Okay. I don't have any, that's the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay. Any other board questions? Okay, because you have one for Ralph, please.
That was my question. But I just, I haven't responded to this point about the increase in circulation, but I feel I need to. In the first place, I have no idea what the Valley Springs Daily News records show or what the, whatever changes might have happened in their circulation and what might have been responsible for those changes. I do have access to our records, and I have a pretty good recollection of those records at this point. And I believe, if I go back and look at our records, I, I will find that there is no bump in our circulation that could be attributed to the awarding of that contract after it had been with the Valley Springs News. I don't believe it had a significant impact on our circulation. It was certainly something that we never discussed internally, and I can go back and look at those numbers, but I don't think those numbers have had any significant jump or, or drop over that year, over those years. It's been, instead, it's been gradual ups and downs, along with the newspaper business in general.
Thank you.
So I, I think that the idea that there's a connection here, 1,000 circulation, doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no more questions by board members, let me just ask, are there any other public comments? If so, please come forward at this time.
To me, I'm Peter Race, Valley Spring, Rancho Calaveras. What mental shortcomings I have, I look at the figures, it's quite substantial. That's what's really impressive to start with. And let me tell you, folks, either, I'm not exactly on top of the Christmas list, and they are not on top of my Christmas list. Let's be clear about it, okay? But let me ask, I had to go through some of this adjudication of the, was it printed or was it not printed, back in Brentwood and so on. To me, attorneys are not on top of my Christmas list, are they? Okay? But beside that, now, another thing is that, for you folks, is that the question is every one of the ads that you put in the legal column are required, and I'm talking in behalf of a taxpayer? Or you have an option, what you're actually going to print or don't print? Because some of that stuff you could post, my recollection has been 15 years, but some of the notices, if you can, you don't have to have it in the paper. And that would be a substantial amount of money saved in behalf of the county taxpayers. Now, it would be nice to, hey, we're getting so much from one paper, because we're getting a Lexus instead of VW. But I think nowadays, I think some of the money that you folks would save, I'm going with the lower bid, some of the rank-and-file folks across the street would really appreciate it. And instead of driving a Lexus, let's just go with a VW, make the best, what we legally required to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm closing public comments. I'll bring the discussion back to the staff.
I have one, one question for you. On the Enterprise bid, since, since they currently have the contract, is this, is this bid an increase over the, over the original bid from 2007? Or is it a continuation of that bid? Or is it a reduction in what that bid represented?
It's a reduction. The bid in 2007 was $7 a column inch, and this one is 675 a column inch.
So it's down a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, other? Other than that, okay, that, that basically answers my question. I am a little interested in Peter's question, and that is, are we putting in the newspapers under legal notice things that are not required under the law to be put in the newspaper? And are there alternative ways for certain items to be just posted as opposed to print it? Or do we just print what, what the law requires?
I do believe there are some items that we are printing now that there are alternative options for. There are items that are absolutely required to be printed.
The board's agenda doesn't have to be printed.
Well, that's so important.
I thought I'd hear that, but that's, that's one of the optional items.
Okay. So you could just post the board's agenda, for instance?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that, that answers my questions. Other board questions or comments?
Go ahead, Darren.
I'd like to make some observations and comments before we, you know, take, make any decisions on this. Mr. Alridge asked, asked a rhetorical question regarding what the purpose of the printing of Legals was for. His answer to that rhetorical question was to try to make sure the most, as many people as possible are able to receive the information that's required by law to be made known. But the, the question that we have to ask ourselves is, you know, what are we required as a county to do? What is our obligation? You know, Supervisor Callaway asked Zachariah, our staff member, if the print font size, though it is small in, in font size, you know, was the requirement based on just something arbitrary, or was it something based on requirement? And Zachariah responded to Supervisor Callaway, quote, "What we ask for is what's required by law." So the Valley Springs News proposal is based on a font size that's required by law. In my opinion, if it is, that it's difficult for somebody to read, then they might need to look into buying a magnifying glass. Supervisor Toffinelli is wearing his bifocals, and he tells me-
They're not bifocals.
Oh, they're not bifocals. Excuse me. Reading glasses. Okay, sorry. And, and I heard him comment that he could, that he could read the, the print in front of him. So I'm, I'm assuming that if somebody needs more visual enhancement than a pair of reading glasses, excuse me, that, you know, they might pick up a, a magnifying glass at the dime store. I know my great-grandmother had one right next to her lazy boy chair when I was a kid that she used quite often, and I'd steal it and use it to burn my name in wood on her fence. Anyway, be that as it may, the next statement by Mr. Alridge was that the benefit, again, would be that more people would read it. But to be frank, you know, and, and I'm using the word frank, you know, we, we talk a lot about what particularly words mean, you know, we've been throwing a lot of that around, the definition of language this last few months, and there's a difference between somebody saying, "To be honest with you," because I, I always intend to be honest. So I would say that I, that this is not saying I'm being honest, I'm being frank in the statement. In all frankness, in terms of benefit, the county's facing a fiscal crisis right now. I don't think that's a, that's a secret to anybody. And for us to spend twice as much for printing in a paper that has a benefit to the public by greater circulation or larger font size, which neither are required by law, is, in fact, as Mr. Aldridge states, a benefit. So if we, if we as a board decide to pay twice as much for the benefit of people who may have a hard time reading the small print, or may have, you know, there may be less circulation numbers, which is debatable, after rewarding the bid, the circulation may increase, I don't believe us as a board or as a county really should be opting to pay twice as much for a benefit when that money could be used to keep possibly county employees from losing their jobs, could possibly benefit the taxpayers. I mean, God forbid, the taxpayers pay less taxes because we have less expenditures. So with all of these things in mind, I can't rightly, you know, adjudication, non-adjudication, circulation numbers, benefit of reading, all of those things are debatable. You know, I'll, I'll use Mr. Aldridge's words again. He said that it's a legal interpretation of, of the law in terms of adjudication matters. All of that stuff aside, if we look just at the face value of what's required by law, as Mr. Zachariah, our staff member, stated, we are required by law to print certain things at a certain font size. That's it. So in light of cutting our budget and people that are going to be laid off and losing their jobs, I think that the responsible thing to do as a board is to award the bid to the lowest bidder, who has given testimony here today, that they are willing to comply with whatever the board wishes in terms of font size or distribution, and that they are legally requirement, they're legally, the legal requirements the state imposes on the county are being met. At this point, we can't really afford, in my opinion, for benefits when we're talking about laying off people. If we can save one job in this county, somebody that works for this county government, if we can save one job by going with the lower bidder, and be that as it may, somebody may have to use a magnifying glass, I'm saying it's the responsible thing to do to try to save that one job. I would also submit to you that since the low bidder also prints in this county and will most likely have an increase in readership in, in conjunction with this, if they're the winning bidder, the lower bidder has proven that they are willing to expand jobs in this county in which they already print in versus outsourcing to a San Joaquin County printing firm. So not only will you have possibly one government employee job saved here at the county workers, but also an increase in maybe private sector jobs of people that will be necessary for the extra printing that takes place for Mr. Baptista's paper.
Okay. Thank you. Gary, do you have additional comments?
Yeah, I have a few. You know, I'm, I'm in a unique situation here, being that both newspapers are distributed, and there's offices are in my district, and I know both of them very well. So I'm in a kind of, I guess you would say I'm in a hot seat right now. You know, I, I'm a contractor by trade. I own my own business, and what was being talked about here by two proprietors in this particular business and going up with a bid I'm very familiar with because I did jobs all of the time. And I've been outbid here in the last course of the last two or three years, I'm being outbid by companies that are not only outside the communities or outside the areas that the job is going up, but they're also outside the state. Some of them I'm being beat by are in states such as Oklahoma, Utah, Tennessee. And my comments are the same when I get beat to the general contractor, that you've got to look at the fine print and the services provided. I'm right here, I'm local, I'm within a hundred miles of the project, two hundred miles, whatever, and they're several states away. However, in a competitive business, as anybody trying to build a house, they go and get bids from contractors, and more than likely, they're going to go with the lowest price. This particular instance here, we are looking at financial crisis, not only nationally, state, but here in the county, all the local municipalities, the local counties, not knowing what the state is going to do. Jeannie herself is going through, and her staff is going through tremendous turmoil trying to figure out how to present us with a budget that is balanced. This money comes from general fund. When I'm looking at a bid here that's giving me a total estimated savings of forty-six thousand dollars, I've got to seriously look at that bid. I'm, I'm sorry, but I have to have my attention at that bid and whether it can provide what is required by law. Mr. Baptista has said that he is willing to do several things here when, when he was questioned about it. I want to make perfectly clear that it is in my, in my board packet here, some of the notations that are in it says, "If the board were to award this contract to the Valley Springs News, the Valley Springs News would have sixty days to include service to all the required communities. If they fail to do so, the county would cancel the contract with Valley Springs News." Very well aware of that. I'm sure you've read that and understand that. This is a tremendous undertaking in a short time of sixty days if we were to award this to you. I don't know what your plans are in increasing staff at your newspaper if this is awarded to you in order to accomplish all of this. I'm sure you have some plan in mind, knowing you, Nick, you're not, didn't go into this blind, but I'm looking at an estimated savings you're claiming of forty-six thousand dollars to me. Forty-six thousand dollars in our general plan savings, our general fund savings, is, in these times, is substantial. It is very substantial. And in, in other years, when, when times weren't the way they are and we had certainty and things were going well, it may not jump out as much as it does to me right now, but forty-six thousand dollars, knowing what we're looking at. And if you're going to accomplish the things that you're claiming to accomplish within the next sixty days, simply because of financial situation, I, I would support giving the Valley Springs News this contract.
I support the Calaveras Enterprise for several reasons. One, its news coverage is countywide, it's not just the legal notices. When the Valley Springs paper, or the Daily News, what it was called at the time, was distributed through the Ebbets Pass area, I received many, many complaints about the paper because people were getting it not just for the legal notices, but because of the news, which is why I asked Mr. Baptista how he was going to just cover the news of areas other than the Valley Springs. I think it's important that we only publish what is mandatory. So I know if the Board of Supervisors' agenda is not a mandatory and it could be posted, as Peter mentioned, then we should do that, which would then save on that cost. If we start getting complaints on font size, which I know we will, and then we ask to have an increase, then that's a change order, and there will be an increase in cost at that level. And I, I normally would agree with Darren and Gary on trying to save as much as we can, but considering the importance of the postings, that they're legally mandated, and other departments use them, and the grand jury report, if the Valley Springs paper just does half of that, just does, how, I don't even know how many there, how many papers they have, let's say they have a thousand or eleven hundred, and they're going to do it for eleven hundred, and the enterprise says, "Well, we won't do sixty-two hundred, we'll do three thousand." Will that reduce the two thousand to then one thousand? And I know the grand jury report is read a lot throughout the county. We're also, as Baptista said, he'd be willing to provide as many free copies as possible to the libraries, which means if he provides a lot of free copies to the libraries, people won't be purchasing or subscribing. And in the Ebbets Pass area, they're not going to subscribe to the Valley Springs News. For the news, they're going to subscribe, if at all, to, for legal postings, and if they can get it, excuse me, for free at the Arnold Library, then there'll be no need to subscribe. I appreciate his wanting to do that, but having been a small business owner, every time you do that, there's a cost to that. And as much as, in my true philosophy, like to support the small person and to encourage the small business owner, in this case, I think it's important that we get as wide a distribution from a paper that covers the county as widely as it does for its news component, which therefore would be the legal notices. I have to support the Calaveras Enterprise. Thank you, Tom.
I'll give my comment. At this point in time, I will support staff's recommendation. Staff's recommendation at this point in time is the Calaveras Enterprise. This is the, I suspect the basis is the same basis we've had discussions in the past, and one's based on the number of, the amount of circulation and the amount, number of people that will have access to the legal notices versus a savings in cost. You know, as, as it stands now, or a two-to-two vote on the board, either we can take a vote and be there, or we can just entertain a motion for a continuance until our missing supervisor returns, which I believe is two weeks.
May third.
Okay. Also, because I, I think that's what will happen, it'll get, continue to May third, and I would like to talk to Jeannie and talk about the financial implications of, of the forty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars, and saving how many people actually read the legal notices, et cetera. So at this point, anyway, we're at a two-to-two vote. Do you guys want to take a vote and have a tie vote, or should we just continue it for the two-week period?
What's the outcome of tie vote?
No.
We just continue the status quo for two more weeks. I mean, we still have to print, so I'm, I'm assuming the enterprise would continue to print.
Either way, we wouldn't have a contract.
We would be continuing as we have since the contract expired.
That's right.
Yeah, it would, it would just be the status quo until two weeks when we get direction.
And then we would vote again?
Yes, then we would vote.
With Steve here?
With Steve here, and hopefully that breaks the vote. And like I say, I, I want to talk to Jeannie about the financial implications of all this also, to see if that's still where her recommendation's going to be.
Well, regardless of Mr. Aldridge's testimony of, you know, interpretation of the law, I'm not convinced that, you know, his paper, although it, they currently possess an adjudicated, you know, a right to be adjudicated, I don't believe, it's just my opinion based on the law that I've read, it's my interpretation as a non-lawyer, but an educated person. If his paper were to apply for adjudication today, they would be denied based on state law. So I look forward to the conversation two weeks from here.
Well, why don't you check with the county council between now and two weeks and see, I mean, obviously, that would certainly resolve the issue. So I think you need to check with county council.
I already have.
Okay.
That's why I'm firm in my opinion.
Why don't you, are you at liberty to give an opinion at this point, or would you rather wait the two weeks?
Well, there's a couple of things. First of all, this item really can't be continued as it's, as it's written now, it needs to be described differently, because this item just provides for, an award to the Calaveras Enterprise, so, so we need, we'll need to rewrite it. So it's going to be awarded to one or the other.
We will just continue the, continue the issue.
The issue, yes. And I can prepare something in writing for the board. The statutory scheme for adjudication is very clear, one of the few simple things in the government code, and it, it provides a process whereby anyone- And it provides a process whereby anyone, is the word that's used, anyone who disputes that newspaper is properly adjudicated can go into court and challenge that. That has not happened, and as long as the court adjudication stands, we're bound by it.
Okay, so it stands now?
It stands now, yes.
Okay, and if the board wanted a vote to go to court to say that it's not properly adjudicated, then it stands?
Yes.
Or a private party?
Yes.
Any party?
And I think it would be, it's beyond the board's ability to, beyond what the court has determined.
Okay.
That can be changed if the process is followed.
Okay. So...
The language I used was, if the enterprise was to reapply for adjudication today, they would fail, in my opinion, based on California law.
Okay, I've, you know...
We anticipated this as an issue and included language in the draft contract, which says that if the successful bidder loses court adjudication, then the contract can be terminated.
Okay, so that would be included in... Okay, and if it comes back in two weeks, then make sure you get the two comments that Gary had on workers' comp and liability, incorporate those in the contract, both parties agreed that that was acceptable. So, and like I say, I, you know, I'm going with staff's recommendation right now. I want to talk to staff about the financial implications a little more. And if it comes back in two weeks, I'll feel a little more comfortable probably than I feel right now.
So you're looking for...
For a two-week continuance of the issue.
Of the issue.
I would move for a two-week continuance of this issue, revisit it on May 3rd.
And it needs to come back so that it can go, it needs to be worded to the contract so that it can go to one party or the other, so we don't have to bring it back again, because it's not going to the party that was recommended by staff. So, okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Toffenelli for a two-week continuance. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Supervisor Callaway. Do I have further board discussion? All in favor, so indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye with music, is that what?
Board chair.
iTunes.
The board chair?
iTunes.
Oh, my.
Marita, you know how to put it on vibrate? Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor, so indicate by stating aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes on a 401 absent vote for the board.
Did you want us to keep this?
Okay, I'm gonna take a moment here, we're gonna put this on vibrate, I'm trying to...
Keep our packet? Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take a three-minute recess while I try to figure out how to turn this thing off. Correspondence reports and various matters of...
Tom, what are you talking about?
I want item 10.
He's talking about review of correspondence reports and various matters of concern.
Got it. Thank you.
Me, I was right this time?
Let's start with Marita, then.
Let's start with Marita, because we know she's discondefered.
Okay, I have Calaveras Public Power Agency meeting this week, Calaveras Humane Society dinner. And that's it. Oh, gosh, Tom.
Barbecued hot dogs? Okay, Zach complete your comments?
Yes. Oh, well, I have to say, Mr. Froggy's Wild Ride was, the fundraiser for Feeny Park on Saturday was really good. There were a lot of people from out of the county that were there. And as Marty said, the Follies was also fun. And my colleague on the board was in it, he was very good.
Thank you, Marita.
He carried a gun in this first one.
I carried a gun with no bullets.
Was his act sustainable?
I'm not, is debatable.
Wait a minute, did I not win an award?
Did you?
I did win the award.
Most sustainable?
Yes, the best sustainable practices.
There you go. Okay, Gary, what do you have?
I have an Upper McCallme River Water Authority meeting on Friday at Party, East Bay Mud Facilities at Party Lake. It's at 10:00 a.m. on Friday, filling in for Steve. And I have nothing else to bring before the board. No Follies or melodramas, or tributaries, or anything else to participate in, so...
Very good, I have one item, there will be a LAFCO meeting, both Aaron, I assumed, Aaron will be there, and I will be there on Monday in these chambers at 6:00 p.m. So that completes the board part, we'll go to county council. Do you have anything additional, county council?
Yes, sir.
Jeannie, do you have anything for the board?
I do.
Diane, do you have any?
I do.
Oh, my God. The first ever.
The Commission on Aging Senior of Year nomination forums are included in your correspondence packets today. The deadline for submitting a nomination is Wednesday, May 4th. And the awards luncheon will be held on Tuesday, May 24th, from 12:00 noon until approximately 2:00 p.m. at the Covenant Church in San Andreas.
Well, I think we should put it on the board's agenda and have the board nominate Marita as Senior Woman of the Year.
Oh, that's good, Tom.
Okay, I didn't get, I didn't get any support. Okay, I guess that completes the review of correspondence reports and various matters of concern. We'll now go into our study session. Do you want time to break down, or you gonna, you gonna film the study session?
No.
Do you want some time to break down?
If you don't mind me breaking it down while you...
Okay, then we will proceed. With the study session, discussion, and provide direction for the future direction of the Agricultural Dispute Resolution Committee.